Call it the evening, the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, October 8th, 2014, at 7:03 PM. Could we have members present, please?
Joseph Atidy, Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Joseph Waters.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. Thank you. And I understand we have some students from MP Brown Elementary School to lead us in the pledge. It sounds like they're still outside, so we'll just... We'll send Mr. Vidalis to bring them in. Because we should have sent a notice out there for them, too, before we started. Here they come. Come on in, kids, and file right up to the front.
All right. He must be the leader.
Right there. All right.
No, face us. Come to face us.
The flag over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much, children. And... Yeah, it is. It says it is. And we do have certificates to thank you for leading us in the pledge tonight and for coming. So don't go anywhere for just a minute. No, them. Sorry. Okay, Maureen. Beautiful smile. Thank you for coming tonight. So cute. And Sean. Thank you for coming. I love your small sweatshirts.
Maybe they can say something.
Yes, they just came to lead the pledge. Thank you very much for coming, kids, and to your parents for bringing you. Okay. Thank all the principals for coming. And for bringing the kids. Yes, and appreciate the... All of you for coming and for bringing the kids from MP Brown. Thank you. That brings us to approving the agenda. We've had a request to move item 4.1 up to section 1.4. So the first item in section 1, general functions. So if...
Could you read that?
It's the principal appointment. It's section 4, item 1, certificated personnel.
Oh, item 1. I thought you said 4. Okay, I looked down.
And moving it up to be the first item, live item in general functions or the...
Okay.
Right after the consent agenda.
Okay. Call it 1A.
So since I made that so incredibly clear, I will make that a motion that we approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. The next item is public hearing. I could... On the school district, intent to file a general waiver on behalf of the California Virtual Academy. I'll declare it open at 7:08 and let Mr. Vidalis explain.
Yes, so the California Virtual Academy at San Mateo is a charter organization that our school board has chartered originally in 2006. Every year, they need to file a what's called a funding determination. It's usually done in February. This last year, in 2014, they were unable to do so. The individual who was supposed to file it needed to leave the country. So upon his return, end of February, he tried to file it, and they said, "You need to now do a waiver that goes before the State Board of Education, and you can't do your waiver until the fall when the process and the waiver window opens." So seeing as they are not an LEA, we need to file for them. So this is just a public hearing that is required prior to authorization for filing, and it is a bureaucratic misstep that we're following through with trying to help it happen adequately.
So the waiver is because it was late?
Yes, the waiver was because the funding determination in 2014 was filed late.
Are there any speaker cards for this topic? Okay, in that case, I will declare the public hearing closed at 7:10 PM. And that brings us to our special presentation for tonight, the Attention to Attendance Award and Recognition Program.
Thank you. I can introduce this. So I want to thank everyone who is here tonight. Thank you for coming. This is an exciting moment in our district. We've been focusing on showing up now for about a year. We've always focused on showing up, but we've... We've just started to highlight it and using that terminology now for about a year. And tonight, we are going to be doing a special presentation of awards to our invited guests from Garden Village Elementary, Tobias Elementary, Kennedy Elementary, and Fernando Rivera Intermediate. We're very happy and thrilled tonight to be presenting awards to these schools for their incredible efforts in creating a culture of showing up at their school site and by showing improved attendance and increasing their parental site and student engagements. So we have representatives here from School Innovations and Achievement to assist in the presentation. They're going to say a few words about our partnership and the improvements that these elected sites made this last year.
Thank you, Superintendent Vidalis. Thank you, board members, cabinet members. Again, I'm from School Innovations and Achievement, and we are thrilled to be here tonight to present these awards to your site staff and these incredible sites we have here tonight. So we're here to honor them for their leadership in, as Superintendent Vidalis mentioned, in attendance improvement and helping to create this culture of showing up and really enhance the culture of showing up here at the district. And collectively, your district, these sites, your site staff, your parents, your students, everyone has really increased their effort to create that culture of showing up. And through that, you've increased parental involvement, parent and student engagement, and employee commitment as well. And our team at SINA has been very fortunate to experience this firsthand by working very closely with their site staff. And we've been able to experience their passion and dedication to creating this culture. So it's really been fantastic to see throughout this last year of our partnership. And we looked at all of the data from last year, and it tells an exceptional story and about the attendance here at Jefferson, and it's a story that we wanted to share. So I will be sharing some statistics here tonight as we award these site and your site staff. So without further ado, the first site we will be awarding tonight is Garden Village Elementary. And Garden Village Elementary had a 14% improvement in overall absences last year, 29% improvement in truancy, 18% improvement in excessive excused absences, and a 69% improvement in chronic absences. And what that means is an incredible over 1,300-plus hours of learning time gained. So we would like to honor tonight Principal Mary Beth McLaughlin.
Who is in Poland.
Who is in Poland. So we'll be celebrating her here in spirit. Secretary Barbara Schreiber and attendance clerk Chris Sherrambarrow.
All right.
Thank you all.
We have here the new principal of Garden Village, who is also last year's principal at GSK, so she'll be...
Oh, wonderful. Okay, wonderful. The next site that we are awarding here tonight is Fernando Rivera Intermediate. And Fernando Rivera Intermediate had a 22% improvement in overall absences, 31% improvement in excessive excused absences, the lowest percentage of truant students in the district, a low percentage of chronically absent students, and over 450 learning hours gained last year. So tonight, we are honoring Principal Subani Parcells, Assistant Principal Dina Conti, Secretary Kathleen Riley, and attendance clerk Tanya Santa Cruz. Thank you all so much.
Briefly, so we've had a lot of shuffling. People are coming up to receive awards for the schools where they served last year, but then they will also... They might now sort of work out that they're now at the schools.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
These are last year's positions, yes.
Correct. This is all based off of 13, 14 improvements. So the next site we will be awarding tonight is Marjorie H. Tobias Elementary. They had a 34% improvement in overall absences, a 36% improvement in truancy, a 33% improvement of excessive excused absences, a very low percentage of chronically absent students, and over 750 learning hours gained last year. So we are honoring, yes, absolutely. So tonight, we're honoring Principal Matt Harris, Secretary Angela Eugenio, and attendance clerks Jean Wong and Symphony Bayonne. Thank you so much for your efforts. Thank you. And finally, tonight, we are honoring... Tonight, we are honoring John F. Kennedy Elementary. Yes. Hooray. 37% improvement in chronic absences, 22% improvement in overall absence rates, and a 25% improvement in excessive excused absences, and over 1,600 learning hours gained last year. So tonight, we're honoring Principal Carolyn Casey, Secretary Michelle Espinoza, and attendance clerk Cher Folsom. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Thank you all for allowing us to present these awards to your incredible site staff, and we're looking forward to doing it again. Thank you.
Yeah. So I just want to share... So there's one plaque that goes to the whole school and will be displayed someplace where everyone can enjoy it. SINA also wanted to award something to the people that they talked to the most. So the individuals that were mentioned, they're the sort of the people that are on the phone or through email communicating with them, and so they have a certificate, framed certificate for them. But the plaque is for the school and for the staff and the parents and the children.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for coming, and congratulations to all of you, and thanks to the hard work at all of our school sites for improving attendance this year.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
That brings us to our communication. I know, I was watching while she brings up... She has a minute, because we go through. So does bring us to communications, starting with our administrator comments. Ms. McCulley.
Yes, I just would like to remind everyone that on Monday, it's an institute day, which is for staff professional development, and so there are no... There's no school for students. So staff will be throughout all of our middle schools and receiving professional development.
I'll pass tonight. Okay. Okay, I do... Board.
Bernie, did he go first?
He goes last.
Oh, he goes last.
Goes after everybody.
Last, I'll be first.
Just want to thank those that sent me some cards when I was home. Kind of recuperating and sick, so thank you. And I'm back tonight, kind of. Anyway, so I really have not a lot to say, because I haven't been to many places. Anyway, that's it. Just want... I just wanted to congratulate also the schools and the principals and everyone that works so hard to bring up the attendance, and I'm sure we'll get more to do the same thing later. Thank you.
Mr. Ali?
Just congratulations once again to all the schools that raised their attendance levels, and it's good to see all the principals out here tonight as well.
Mr. Waters?
I wanted to say again, thanks for everybody for coming, and I wanted to also just have everybody keep an ear out. Being that I'm on the wellness committee, I'd like to begin with some... I don't want to call them boot camps, because I don't want to scare anybody, but let's say workshops on a weekend day. And, you know, I'll keep you guys posted, but I'd like to see a lot of you guys out there, a lot of students, parents, and we'll have some fun. It's time to get fit.
Heart camp. Heart camp.
That's right, heart camp. I like that. Heart camp. It's got a healthy heart going. So just stay... Keep your ears open for that, because that's something I'm starting to really move forward with.
All right. That's something I can get behind. If I can keep moving at all.
No if.
Well, it's an or else, actually. If you don't keep moving, you don't keep moving. I want to say, I actually had... Was able to do two really fun things in the last week, fun and great things in our district. I had... Yesterday, I went to... Was that just yesterday? Yes. I went to FDR, and I got the full garden tour and was just amazed. It's not the first time I've seen their garden, but every year, it is bigger and better. They now have chickens and rabbits. It's an amazing project, and talking to the teachers about how they use the garden to teach both writing and math, obviously, science, the whole... And including sort of reality. One of them showed me they had all their little starts of the peas that were coming up, and along comes the rabbit gets out of its cage and eats them. So that was... That was a lesson in exactly how the world works. I was also able, on Friday, wanted to thank all the people who allowed me to attend the Constructing Meaning Workshop along with a bunch of our junior high teachers. So thanks to Ben Moser, Rachel Paget, and Lisa Rizzo, who led it. It was a fascinating look at both the how and why of using Constructing Meaning to help our ELD students to learn the academic language. And I thought it seemed really well-designed, and one of the things that really struck me on that was the realization, when we start talking about developing academic language, all of our children are English language learners. They are all developing their language. So this is... This isn't just for a portion of our students. This is something that's essential for all of our students. And I won't say more, because I believe that Mr. Moser is here to tell us more about it in just a couple of minutes. But I do appreciate being allowed to come to that. I enjoyed it a lot. And that was all. I have to say, so let's see. Melinda Dart.
Thank you. Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. I want to remind everyone... Oh, thank you. Want to remind everyone that there is an election coming up, and that's November 4th. And we really want to encourage everyone to read about the issues, read about the candidates, get involved. This is not an election that is, you know, especially newsworthy. That is, it's not a presidential election, so voter turnout is going to be low. That means we really need people to remember to vote for issues that affect our schools. And if anybody has questions about that, they should probably ask a teacher, any teacher. And also, I wanted to congratulate all the schools that won an award for attendance tonight. And I want to congratulate both the AFT staff and the CSEA staff that helped that happen, because working in partnership with the parents and with the administrators, that's how that happens. It takes everybody on deck to create that. So I wanted to say thanks to everyone who did that. Thank you.
We'll give a round of applause to all those people who made the attendance happen. Okay. Mr. Vidalis, do we have some...
Yes. So I had an opportunity, and Mrs. Brizuela, you can stop me and share for yourself. But we attended the Jefferson Council of PTA Presidents and Principals Dinner last Monday. It was a wonderful event, very well-attended. Great to hear what all the PTAs are doing across the district, what the council has planned, and it's going to be an exciting year in terms of parent involvement, I can see already. My second announcement, this is sort of a public service announcement, public health announcement. So we're starting to enter the flu season, as you can tell. The temperatures dropped just in the last three hours, and the winds picked up. So I just want to remind everyone that it is time to get flu shots. We really want to make sure our students are healthy when they come to school. I want to make sure that our teachers stay healthy. And so this is sort of a plug for the Woodrow Wilson Health Fair that will happen this Saturday, 10 to 3, at Woodrow Wilson. I'm sure, Mr. Waters, if you wanted to come and do a preview of your heart camp, you might be able to find a corner of the schoolyard where you can get people moving. Just to get people interested in that. There's free flu shots there. There's also lots of other viruses that are around and breaking out in the Bay Area. There's enterovirus, which presents a lot like flu. So people have flu shots, and they're still getting the symptoms, and they know that it's something perhaps more serious. And again, there's hooping cough that is starting to come back into our communities, even for vaccinated people. So we just need to make sure that everyone stays healthy, that we monitor our own systems, and that when we start feeling a little bit down, that we stay home to keep other children from getting sick and keep our staff from getting sick, and really try to keep this under control, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vidalis. Okay. And that brings us to general functions. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Brizuela?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye. Thank you. And then, I think, to what we've all been waiting for, we have our administrative appointment. I keep losing track of where that used to be.
Number one.
It's not as far away as I think. Would you like to introduce that, Ms. Brizuela?
I certainly would. We do recommend the approval of appointment for principal for Thomas Edison, and that's Ms. Riza Bell. And it would be effective, she gets to come in time for Institute Day on Monday, the 13th. It would be step eight on the principal's salary schedule, $119,093 plus $1,100 stipend for an MA, and it gets prorated to her start date. But I just want to say a couple of things. We were, first of all, really lucky to find an experienced principal after the school year starts. That was just amazing. But to find someone who I think is really going to be a great fit, not only for Thomas Edison, but for our whole district. Ms. Bell has seven years of principal experience at the elementary level and really in a community very similar to ours. So she has, and on top of the principal experience, she's been a Common Core and English Language Development trainer and a literacy coordinator. So, you know, some real added pluses. She's worked in Title I schools and program improvement schools and in schools that have a really high percentage of English language learners. So I am very excited that she hopefully is joining us in just a couple of minutes. And she is here tonight.
Yes, she is. And I know we've... We're all thrilled to see such a highly qualified candidate. Does anybody have anything to say on that? Then let's have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we... That we hire... That we approve Riza Bell for principal of Thomas Edison School, effective October 13th, 2014. Not a holiday. And at step eight, and prorated to the start date.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there is no opposition. Congratulations and welcome. And at this time, if you would like to say anything to the board and the public, here's your opportunity.
So what... What district did you come from?
Tell us a little bit about yourself. And we haven't already said.
Well, first, thank you. I'm very happy to be here this evening and thrilled to be the new principal of Thomas Edison. And I come from South San Francisco Unified, and I've been there a little over 20 years. And I'm really looking forward to joining Jefferson Elementary School District and for a great change. And I'm just really excited, and thank you so much.
Welcome.
Ms. Bell, I'll just say a couple of words that I know just how pleased I am and we are to invite you to join us. I'm a firm believer in everything happens for a reason, and Riza is the reason right now. We're very happy that you get to join us, and we look forward to working together at Thomas Edison.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay. So brings us to... So, brings us to item four in general functions, appointment and reappointment of members to the Measure I Citizens Oversight Committee. And...
Yeah, I'd like to just speak a little bit to this, um, just a little background. So, we understand that as, um, when we passed Measure I, we needed to form a Citizens Oversight Committee. Um, one of those, uh, two of those seats, uh, came up for reappointment at the end of the summer. Um, one of them is held by Ms. Kathy Pentazzi and she's agreed to, um, she would like to be reappointed. She represents senior citizens organization on the, on the committee. And then, um, the other one, the business organization, um, Mr. Lopez, um, was unable to continue in that capacity. So, we recruited for that and contacted Chamber of Commerce and members of the Directors Board of the Chamber of Commerce and, um, Mr. Tom Nouris, um, which some of us know because he is a, he is a school board member, um, in our high school district, um, expressed interest. I feel very fortunate that, that he has. He's, you know, if you looked at his application, very highly involved for a very long time in our community and in our business community. He's a business owner, he's a lawyer in the community, and so I think he'd represent those interests as well. So that's, those are my recommendations. Mr. Nurse as initial appointment and Ms. Pentazzi as reappointment.
Well, I'll make the motion that we, uh, appoint Tom Nouris to me, to the Measure I Citizen Oversight Committee, uh, representing the local business community and to reappoint Kathy Pentazzi as representative of a senior citizen organization. Senior citizen organization?
Yes, she's...
Wait a minute. I think it's, it's the, uh, this, the Daily City Retirees Association.
Correct. It's under the category of the senior citizens organizations.
Oh, I see. So you're saying, it's, oh, I thought you were naming it, but...
No, 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 no. Just the category of senior citizens.
Okay, just something, wanted to make sure we got that right.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I hear no opposition. Okay. And at this point then, we get to vote on the general waiver submission on behalf of California Virtual Academy at San Mateo for their funding determination, 2014, 2015.
So, I was just going to ask the question, so we're allowed to, to just do this for them? Because we, like, kind of sponsor them?
Yeah, because we've authorized their charter. They can't do this on their own. We have to do it for them.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that for everybody. Okay.
So, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve granting authority to the superintendent to submit a general waiver application on behalf of KAVA at San Mateo for funding determination 2014, 15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. And now comes the point where we all need to pull out our calendars because we need to make a final decision about our, um, annual board governance session and scheduling it.
Yes, and so, a couple of weeks ago, if you remember, we did, um, have this discussion and we tentatively scheduled, uh, March 7th, um, but it wasn't ideal for everybody, um, but we at least penciled that and went in. We went back to CSBA, um, and they consulted with all of their consultants for other Saturdays in January or February. Um, at this point, they're, they're full. There's nobody that's available for any Saturday in January or February. The only other date they gave us, well, they gave us two. The only other one that works for our district is March 21st. Um, they gave us March 28th as well, but that's right at the beginning of our spring break, um, and I, um, I for sure will hope to be out of town on that day. Very likely and a hundred percent, close to a hundred percent sure that I will not be around, so that doesn't work. So we have the 21st, um, or confirming, um, on the 7th.
Okay. Do we have any, you prefer the 7th? My preference would go into the 7th. I think you were one who had a question for that day.
Yeah, but since then, we changed our plans.
Okay.
So, um, I will, I will be in town that day, but I will not be available on the 21st or the 28th.
Okay, then it sounds like...
So it sounds like the 7th will be it.
Yeah. So do we need to vote to schedule that?
Um, we've already voted to schedule it, so we just say no action. Um, we'll just continue with that.
Okay, that's right. We did a tentative agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to, no, I will make a big circle here because I can't figure out how this calendar works fast enough. I wanted to put it right on right now just because of, uh, the way things have been going in my head lately. Um, okay. Item seven, our special education transportation study contract.
So if you remember at the, um, at the report of our special education study, one of the items was to look more in depth at our transportation cases and, um, identify why, just be clear about why so many of our students are being transported and is there an easier or more cost efficient way of getting them to school? And so this is a, a contract with the same, um, group that did that first study. Um, they have an expertise they didn't, that they didn't do the first time around, um, where they spend several days, um, in the business office and the special education lab reviewing files and, and contracts and trying to make sure, um, that our, our funds are being adequately used in those areas.
I wanted to ask a question about the, um, the service, if you, if you can answer it. Um, I know that we have, we pay for the buses, right, to, to come in, to pick up the children and to take them to school and then pick them up from school and take them home. Is that the only time, that's the timeframe we pay for them? What happens in between?
So we, um, contract out through the county, so the county has a, has a countywide, um, contract with a bus service company. We submit our routes to them and then we get charged for our routes. So we don't, we don't hire the bus all day. We just hire them for the morning route and the afternoon route.
Okay, because I saw a few bus, those buses parked for a long, long time someplace.
Yeah, well, the contract...
In between the school day and I'm wondering, wait a minute.
Yeah, we don't pay for that, so the, so the, so the employment agency, whoever they might be, um, they have to figure out what they do with their employees in the middle of the day.
What exactly are they going to do for this? I think you just said, go into the office.
So there's a, there's a file review section of it that, um, they need to go into every, every student who's being transported and, and figuring out, you know, do they really, um, there was a question about the list that we had of how many students are being transported and then the, the list that the county gave us of how many students are being transported. There was not a match there. So they're going to make sure that, that we have an, an adequate match and we're being charged for the students that we are transporting.
So are you saying that the county's list was larger than our list?
I can't remember who's was larger. I think maybe even our list might have been larger than what the county.
All right.
And so there's also, there's, so, well, I think we just want to be, be, um, there is a question about why are the percentage of students that we transport is larger than the statewide average.
All right.
And so we need to figure out exactly why. And we have some hypotheses about why that is. We just want to be clear about that. Um, and we think, uh, you know, it's just always good knowing why we're spending money versus we're just spending it and we have no idea why. I don't like that. So I like, you know...
But do we have any idea of, I mean, this just says excessive district costs. Are we, have we put an estimate of how much you think we're overpaying?
Um, I would say that if one student is being transported more than we, needs to be, that it would probably cover the cost of the contract. So, the, the transportation is pretty, is very expensive. Um, and, um, not that we don't want to provide transportation to students who need it, we just have to make sure that, that every student we're transporting needs it and that we're doing it in the most efficient way possible. Um, so we feel like, we would like to look into this area to see if there can be any cost savings and then, more importantly, that we understand and know what this amount means that, that we pay.
And was there any way that this could have been done under our first contract?
Um, it would have needed to be more at that point and...
This amount more?
More, yeah, probably, yeah. That amount. I mean, they asked to do it at that time and there was going to be more time and more, more money and I, and I thought it, you know, let's get the first thing done first and I will invite you to come back if, uh, if there seems to be a reason to do so. And I think, I feel comfortable, confident that, uh, this is a good way to just learn more about our whole system.
And it sounds like the very last line there about developing clear processes to track the transportation services is something that we clearly need. Um, I think that's in line with what we know we need in, in all of the special ed department.
That's my next question. What determines whether they need it or not?
Yeah.
So it's determined through the IEP, um, team. Can a student get to school independently or do they require, um, transportation? That's, that's the question. So many of us...
Okay, so it's very specific to each IEP?
Yeah, each, each student, um, that's a question that's asked during an IEP.
Okay.
And so sometimes they require transportation because they live at one end of, of our district and their assignment is on the other end of the school district. And so they, and it's not a parental choice. We're placing them there, so we, we pay for transportation.
Okay. But right now, is that the process, um, using the IEP or this is part of the developing?
Well, I think we just have to be very clear about how we go about determining if transportation services are warranted.
All right.
And again, it's my feeling and, and Mr. Adams' feelings that for the most part, most of those are warranted. We just want to be sure that they are and that, um, we, you know, that also they'll look at the routes that the county has, has, um, offered us and if there's a more efficient, like, are they paying, are they charging us for two routes when really, it really could be one route? Like, they could pick up student A and then student B and then drop them off at the school instead of picking up student A, dropping off at the school and another bus, picking up student B and dropping them off at the school. So that's another part of the study as well.
All right. Very interesting.
Any further questions?
No, it's just, I just think that $15,600 to try and figure out what we're doing that we're already doing when we, I don't understand why we don't know what we're doing.
Yeah, that's why, that's why all of us are asking questions.
I mean, I, I just, you know, it's, it's always the easy way, let's hire a consultant and then we come back and we, it, it's, to me, half the time, I think it's not even worthwhile. Because if we don't know what we're doing, we can't figure out what we're doing, then it's, then we're wrong. We gotta get on the ball.
So we understand, and I think the board understands that the department has been understaffed now for many years and so we haven't had enough folks in the department to be able to do this kind of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we now have almost a complete new staff in the department and they're having to work with and, um, learn all the, the procedures and do some repair of some situations of the past several years and the, and, you know, so I, I, we don't, we do not have a clear process for assigning transportation services.
All right.
And so that's part of the reasons, we want to be able to get a clear process for assigning it.
Okay, so that's where, that's what I want to hear.
And we want to be able to look at our transportation offerings and make sure that all of those offerings are in accord with the new procedures.
It sounds like it's the county is dictating what bus comes and goes, so why aren't they going to pay for part of this?
Good question.
It's because it's our students.
No, but it's their, it's their schedules and I think they ought to be a part of some of this because, I'm sorry...
This has, um, come up in other areas too with our special ed department, so it sounds like we're cleaning up some messes and we have to be a little patient, but also, um, I mean, we're all paying attention to the every meeting.
It's probably something that we could do on our own, but we probably couldn't do it for about another year at least, um, as soon as some of the other sort of more urgent items are taken care of.
Right. Well, I feel a little bit more comfortable since, uh, Mr. Vidalis did say that if there's one student that we're overpaying for, that it'll cover the cost of the $15,000. Otherwise, I would still be a little leery of it as well.
Yeah, when I look at the contract, I think it's a total of probably eight days full time of two or three consultants come and, and do this. So, you know, people, uh, it is definitely better if we could do this on our own. We just can't. I, I can be honest and say that if we don't do anything today, we will not address this probably for at least another year. Um, and eventually we'll get, we'll get to doing it, but, um, we want to try to do it now in line with a lot of other procedures and I, I recommend that we, we enter into the contract now.
Okay, I, I'm not sure I heard the answer to, you, you don't know if we do have excessive district costs. You really don't know that.
When we look at the numbers, we can only guess that yes, we do.
All right.
It appears that we have excessive costs.
All right.
And so we just want to be sure.
That's why we're doing this.
We want to be sure that the costs, if they're excessive, we repair that and if they're not excessive, we understand why they are at that level.
And we have the, we'll have the process that's clear and all, all right. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve special education transportation study contract.
Okay. Do we have a second? I would like to second that. Um, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And opposition?
I'm going to say no because I don't really understand why we don't know.
Okay. Um, so we had three ayes and a no. Okay, thank you. Okay, section two, curriculum instruction, item one, acceptance of donations. We have, um, anybody who want to, uh...
I'll do it.
Let Mr. Tidy's roll here and make the motion with thanks.
All right. So we, we, yeah, like to thank, um, Life Touch for their $548 CMP Brown, Nicole Collette, 150 to M.H. Tobias, and $12.30 that we're happy from Save Mart Supermarket Shares Program to be used at the school, Thomas Edison.
Okay.
I believe that's it.
Yes.
Thanks for your donations and we'll put them to good use.
Was that a motion? I didn't, I lost track there.
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, okay.
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll say that we, we smile a little when we see that $12.30 from Save Mart, but, you know, that buys several boxes of pencils at least.
Every penny helps.
And every penny helps.
It really does.
So, we won't turn it down. Okay, and that brings us to curriculum instruction, item three, our English Language Development Update. Mr. Moser. Who needs no interruption? He is the program director of our English Language Development Program.
Good evening. My name is Delia Ali and I'm president of the District English Learner Advisory Committee. And I'm also a parent of three children attending Westlake Elementary. I'm happy to be here tonight to tell you more about what we do. Each California Public School District within, with 51 or more English learners must have a district level advisory committee. DILAC is charged with the responsibility to advise the governing board on the progress programs and services of the English learners.
Good evening, Madam President and fellow board members. All districts receiving Title III funds are required to meet certain English language proficiency levels. So what you see in front of you, the Annual Measurable Achievement Objective, or AMAO, which is a little easier to spit out, um, is a performance objective that school districts must meet each year for their English learner population. AMAO1 refers to the percentage of English learners making progress by moving up one level on the California English Language Development Test. In 2013-14, we had 2,268 annual students who took the CELT. Annual means these students have been designated as an English learner for at least one year. And as you can see, we did indeed meet our growth target for this first AMO, AMAO. And here we have the results of the students on the CELT test, broken down by the five proficiency levels from beginning to advanced. You see, for example, at fourth grade, we have 253 students overall, but then it's broken down by proficiency level. So I'll give you just a moment to kind of look at where most of the students are falling.
D L A C is responsible for reviewing and commenting on district reclassification procedures. This table provides information on how a district determines whether or not an English learner has sufficient proficiency to be reclassified as a fluent English speaker in four areas: English language proficiency, performance in basic skills, parent opinion, and teacher evaluation. In the last academic year, three hundred and fifty-eight students were reclassified as fluent English proficient. And at the September fifth meeting, D L A C approved the Riverside E L A assessment as a replacement of the California Standard Test for the comparison of basic skills. Benjamin will share an example of this assessment for your review.
So with the approval of D L A C's recommendation, the Riverside Assessment will replace the English Language Arts California Standards Test as the comparison of performance in basic skills. So you have now in your hands a secure copy for your review. This happens to be a third-grade sample of the Riverside assessments that students just recently took. And so I'd like to give you a moment to peruse that, to take a look at what we are expecting students to do for this portion of the reclassification criteria. And as you'll note, that focuses on one of the four domains, that's the reading portion. It's not assessing the listening, the speaking, and the writing. So if we continue, do you mind if I, I know it's rather meaty, that's at the third-grade level. It's pretty sophisticated, though. I'm sure you can, yes. So with AMAO II, that refers to the percentage of English learners attaining English proficiency as measured by CELT. And so for this AMAO, there actually are two kind of categories, less than five years. So this cohort contains English learners who have been in language instruction programs for less than five years. Whereas if you look at the following cohort with five years or more, that's the second cohort. And once again, for AMAO II, we did indeed meet our targets. So I'd like to, that's kind of the data. So we always want to start with the data and then kind of plan our instruction based on that. So we know that English learners face the unique challenge of learning English as an additional language, as they are also learning grade-level content through English. So the new E L Ds support this dual endeavor by actually providing fewer and higher standards. With forty-four percent of our student population designated as English learners, this graphic really reinforces the importance of the new E L D standards. You notice they're at the center of the earth. And all of the other content areas. So we really need to focus on that forty-four percent. And as Dr. Douglas stated at the beginning, really, we are all English learners. So jumping into the standards, there are nineteen standards for each grade level, the first twelve of which focus on English learners and how they need to interact in meaningful ways. And they're clustered into three modes of communication: collaborative, interpretive, and productive. And what this means is students need to talk, they need to work with each other to make meaning. The second part of these standards are what we're probably a little more familiar with, and this is the nuts and bolts of English. It's the grammar, and it's the syntax. The standards were specifically written, though, to separate the two. We didn't want to just go back and focus on what is the correct object of this sentence. We wanted to make sure that we had students interacting and talking before they got to this piece. Another change with the standards is we're moving to actually three levels of proficiency, and they're represented in orange. So emerging, this is where students quickly are learning English. This is what we often call playground English. And where it gets a little difficult is once we reach expanding. So I don't know how many of you have learned a second or a third language, but this is where it really becomes difficult. Bridging, this alludes to the transition to full engagement in the grade-level academic tasks that we expect of all students. We also want to recognize what the native languages that students bring to the table and the importance of those, and also that English is really all about lifelong language learning. So based on all of that, what are our next steps? We're talking about two different areas: designated E L D and integrated E L D. We begin with integrated E L D. You have to think about this as having the content standards at the forefront, meaning you're talking about science standards first, the English Language Development standards supporting that. Whereas with designated E L D, that's a protected time during the day where you will have the E L D standards right out front, and you will have the content standards supporting that. That's where you're really going to focus on, hmm, what is the difference between wood and might? So during that time, you would get into the nuances of the syntax. So I've given you a few graphics. We talked a little bit about constructing meaning. That relates more to integrated E L D. Imagine learning inside, we're supporting our newcomer students. Right now, we have about fifty-eight of them in our district. And this year in particular, Westlake Elementary has the greatest number of newcomer students. And Language Central refers to our core curriculum that we use during designated E L D.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
How are the teachers supported in being able to utilize this English language development at the core and then wrapping the subject content around that?
During integrated E L D? During designated E L D?
I thought that's what we were going towards, yeah.
So, two different ways. So we will, during designated E L D, we'll use Language Central as the core instruction. So all of the trainings that we are providing, you know, we meet with every English Language Arts teacher twice a year. So during that time, some of the slides that I've just presented to you, that's exactly what I'm doing with teachers. And then I'm just giving you a snippet, for example, in this slide, of an example. So, for example, students cannot write what they cannot say. So we spend an awful lot of time developing oral language before we go to any written product. So if you look at this example here, basically, all of our functions or the purposes of anything that we do, think about a conversation that you had this morning. What was the purpose of it? Some of it is social, but we want to get to those academic purposes, and there are about five, one of which is sequencing. So if you look here, at the beginning of the, a beginning level, you see things like, first, I got up, next, I brushed my teeth, then I went to school. Whereas by the target, down at the bottom, we want to get students to initially, subsequently, and eventually. So that's kind of the progression that we want to see. And quite honestly, this can be used in either designated or integrated E L D. In designated, we're really going to focus in on some of that grammatical target language.
So that could be applied to any math, science, whatever.
That's the beauty of this, because our English learners are not going to learn English in forty-five minutes a day. So the more repetition we have, the greater success that we will have teaching our students. So I wanted to open it up for any questions, either for Mrs. Ali or for myself.
I think that was more my own question.
That was your big question?
I think so.
Only one?
You did such a good job.
Anybody else have a question?
Oh, I actually do have a question.
Okay, I knew you would.
So because Mr. Moser did explain those were protected copies of an assessment, we do need those back, so you can make them forward, give them tests. We can give your husband an account, and he can take the test.
I will correct them.
So the other thing I just wanted to answer to support Mr. Ali's question was during the designated E L D time, we do those forty-five minutes a day. Most schools, if not all schools, separate students by their language proficiency levels, because we understand that students who are at the beginning level need to learn certain types of language before, and students at the advanced level need to learn other types of language. And so putting them all together is just like the regular classroom. So we do provide them targeted instruction at their level and to the next level, so that they can move forward.
I think I was thinking about the undesignated time.
Integrated time.
Integrated time.
I'm still learning them.
That's what I was more interested in, like, how the teachers were going to be supported in, you know, making it a seamless.
Yeah, so you heard a little bit from Ms. Debbie Board a couple of weeks ago about the math, English language development. So mathematics teachers, I think it's grades five and up, gets, can be supported in that way. What Dr. Douglas referred to at the beginning with the constructing meaning workshops, that's available also for teachers in fourth or fifth?
We've trained approximately eighty, primarily sixth through eighth-grade content teachers. So that's English Language Arts and all science and social studies teachers in the strategies. So that last slide that you saw there, bringing those students along, but supporting our teachers also, so that they have the tools.
And a lot of those strategies have also been integrated into the trainings we offer to our staffs in Language Arts and in mathematics for our upper grade, and for our lower-grade teachers as well. So they may not qualify for the official training, because those are targeted toward older students. So our coaches and our English Language Arts Department have taken those strategies and integrated them into the trainings that we offer everybody.
All right. The only other question I had was about the assessment, the tests themselves. I guess this kind of might be for Ms. McCulley. But as we're, you know, I guess what I'm asking is, will we be able to use those whenever all districts are required to have some type of test to determine if we're meeting the California, I mean, not the California, the content standards, yeah?
Right, so the CELT test is an English Language Development test, but then there's also the state test, the content test. And last year, as you know, we did not have a test in English Language Arts, and that's what you need for redesignation or reclassification. And that's why we selected, or the D L A C selected what you just looked at, which is an online assessment through the English Language Arts Department. This might be a one-year reclassification designation with this assessment, because then it might be the smarter balance assessment. So we are, we had to have something, and so this is what was selected by the committee and by the English Language Arts Department.
All right, I got you.
So we look forward to seeing you again next year, most likely, for that purpose.
I'll have to modify that procedure again.
So I have a little question here. So you said that students are put into groups?
Yes.
Is that groups within the same classroom?
In general, we have many different ways of doing it. In general, it's across grade level. So for example, from eight forty-five to nine fifteen, all third grade at J F K, it is time to switch. So that way, you will have, you know, all of the beginner students with one person. So other schools that may have a smaller population, we may group fourth, fifth, and sometimes sixth grades together at some of the levels, so that, you know, they're just fewer staff people, and quite honestly, there are fewer English learners at that level.
So this whole, this whole thing is really mostly designated for the English learners, the ones that need, the ones that need the extra help?
For sure, but during that time also, we have our English-only students who we know also have a wide range of needs and abilities, and that's a perfect time for those needs to be met.
So I guess I'm just gonna put a little, a little plug here, I guess, an advertisement. I think that all these programs are wonderful, and it's really good that we're doing all this, and we're working towards helping our students to be the best they can be, raise the scores. But I do think that in fairness, it would be really appropriate to look into how much more help they would have, and the teachers as well, if we could have an aide in some of the classes.
Well, thank you. I'm always, you know, supporting additional support, but that's, thank you.
I personally don't like this, the feeling that some of the students know they have to go to another classroom, because they're not good enough to be with the kids in the class. That's always been sort of an issue with lots of children. And it would be nice if we did have the aides to come in there and to help, because we pile all this different stuff up on the teachers. We want to be successful. We have all the training, but we need more tools. And I hope that we can find that in some of the money that's, will be someplace here?
Thank you.
Can you find some money?
Well, I don't know. If I, listen, if I won the lottery, we would have aides. I don't seem to be able to win that lottery. But I think that we should look at the areas that we feel are the most needed, the most needed, and then see if we can't work on that. Okay, end of my advertisement.
Well, I don't think you'll find a person here who disagrees that having more aides and more people in the classrooms would help all of our students, especially probably the English learners.
Agreed.
Buy that lottery ticket yet?
No, but I will.
There is, there is an action item attached to this presentation. We do, the board does need to accept the redesignation criteria recommended by the D L A C.
Is it the new standards?
I think it's, it would be the...
Approve D L A C's recommendations.
The D L A C's recommendations to utilize the Riverside Assessment English Language Arts Score Proficient for English Language, English learner reclassification.
Right, on the grounds that that's what we have.
Oh, here it is.
Oh, just accept it, like?
Right, okay.
All right, I'll do it. I'll make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation that we approve the D L A C's recommendations to utilize Riverside Assessment English Language Arts Score of Proficient for English learner reclassification. Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And no opposition? All right, thank you ever so much to both of you. Okay. Business. So we have item four, it's architectural and engineering services for repair of existing windows at Ben Franklin.
Sounds like a good thing.
Yeah, let me just give you a brief background. So last year, when the sixth grade expanded, we refurbished a couple of classrooms in the Ford wing for more sixth-grade classes. In that process, we moved a lot of items that were, those rooms were used as storage, so we moved items out. We found some areas that needed emergency repair, and we went ahead and completed the emergency repairs. But in that process, we also determined that there's something else that we need to replace, that whole window wall. And so this is for the architectural services that will draw up the plans for that replacement, so that then we can put that project out to bid to contractors, and they know how to... so that then we can put that project out to bid to contractors and they know how to, how to bid on it appropriately.
Oh, this is not for putting it in?
This is just...
No, this is replacing what's existing there that's...
This is for the architectural work.
This is for the, this is for the, this is to drop the plans that the contractors will need to look at and then bid on to do the work.
This is, this comes out of...
There is no safety issue right now, but it will be a safety issue if we don't take care of it.
And there's also just the issue of the more we delay on things like that, although it sounds like this point it's already been delayed to the point where it's an entire wall, not just a window, but that's one of the illustrations of what we get for deferring.
Is this one room?
It is for the whole wing.
Oh, the whole, the whole wing?
That overlooks what's now the solar panels in Ben Franklin. The forty wing looks over that lower field.
Oh, in the back.
It's the part that faces west.
Yes, so it's that whole, that whole window wall there.
So Fund Twenty-One, is that the bond stuff?
So the Fund Twenty-One is for, is our capital facilities fund. So it includes, there are sub-funds within that. There's bond, there's the state reimbursement monies that we had, and eventually the Christopher Columbus monies for facilities go into that as well.
So it's going, so money from that goes to facilities?
It's only for facilities, Fund Twenty-One.
Only for facilities?
Wish I was an architect.
So possibly going towards fields because that's facilities.
Yeah, and so those are four projects that the board has prioritized. And so we, we, at least the state reimbursement funds and the bond funds are for... The ones that have been prioritized, yeah, facility projects.
But if it hasn't been prioritized, that's something that we could...
Then we have to come back and reprioritize.
Okay. So the emergency was taken care of. Was there a request from Mr. Parish or is just something that you saw?
No, this was something that our department saw as we were refurbishing that last spring.
Right.
Took care of the emergency repairs that needed to happen. A little bit better than duck chase. So some emergency repairs that needed to happen. And then we identified that there's a longer-term solution that needed to be applied. And so this, hoping that this summer, we can, we can do the longer-term solution.
All right, sounds good to me.
Are there any further questions?
No.
Motion to approve the administration's recommendation of governing board authorizing Deem, Deems Lewis McKinley to provide architectural engineering services for the repair of existing windows at Ben Franklin Forty Wing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I think I'm going to need to go. My legs are just painful right now. Yeah, as long as I just go straight on.
Okay.
But you want to take a break or anything or just ice and jazz?
Do you need a recess?
I hate to see a TV that I go out.
Yeah, we could take, we'll take a two-minute recess here for just a moment. Okay. And if I have not missed anything, we are in certificated personnel, item five, the job description for Director of Technology and Curriculum Integration. Do you want to speak to that, Ms. Hopkins?
Yeah, I'll start it off, and then Ms. McCulley will probably add a little bit more. So when we made our local accountability, our local control accountability plan, the LCAP, we did, from that, put into that plan, recognizing our need for a new technology position, that there'd be someone who's overseeing the two big aspects of technology in our district, the operational types of things, but then also the instructional component. And so that's what led to this job description that we would like approval of tonight. And so the person in this position would provide leadership to both those divisions, including things like supporting teachers, providing, you know, overseeing training, overseeing the implementation of our technology plan that the district has, and coordinating with our program directors in the curriculum department, you know, as to best practices to utilize technology in our district. Between, you know, taking the state tests on computers and all the other instructional needs that'll be, we just felt if we could hopefully find someone with both those backgrounds to do this job.
And that is a district-wide position?
Uh, yes, it's a district-wide position, and it's funded from supplemental and concentration grants.
Seems like we're going to need more than one before we're done.
So yes, if I could just add to that a little bit. You know, as, as you know, Common Core State Standards, technology integration is a big part of it, and we want our students to have twenty-first century skills, and, you know, we have a technology department, we have a curriculum instruction department. We don't, the people in each department don't necessarily have the skills of both departments, and so that's what we really need, is someone, I don't have the skills, the technical skills for technology, and technology doesn't have the instructional skills for integrating. And so we need someone that really has both of those skills, that can lead this initiative and lead our students to, and our staff, to integrate technology into the daily curriculum. So it's a very needed position. I shared with you, I think in the fall, or in the spring, kind of some of the plans that came through with our Common Core Implementation Advisory Committee, and this was one of the recommendations that you approved.
You have someone in mind?
Do we have someone in mind?
Yeah.
No.
We're hoping somebody out there will really look at this and see that it's the thing for them, that, you know.
So where are we going to be recruiting from?
Well, our usual sources for people in management positions like this, there's a couple online places that we use and some administrative newspapers.
Okay.
And just, oh, so go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to add, this is something that every district in the county and the state is really kind of looking to create these positions. It's a new position. A lot of districts have some of these positions that are, that are further along than we are, but I think a lot of districts are implementing this in their district, and so there's going, we need to be a little competitive with this as well, because there's going to be a need for this statewide.
Are we going to be using more, or reaching out more, looking in, in, in an effort to increase diversity? Are we going to reach out more than we have been, to say, more?
Do you?
Less traditional?
So by, what do you mean, like Craigslist or something?
More, I'm thinking like, cut like, I just, I was just at CSM yesterday, and they had a, a job fair, or something like, something to that effect, but maybe at a university?
Yeah, so we will for sure do the statewide publications that, that we do. There's also statewide online job boards.
Okay.
That we pursue from. I am a member of the Stanford alumni, and I can post positions there as well for the, anyone's coming out of that, those programs. But this is, I, I'm, I am assuming that the recruitment for this is going to need to be word of mouth, because there are so few people who are skilled in both worlds, that we, we all need to reach out to our contacts and say, who do you know that can do both of these things? And recruit from there, and then they go through the traditional interview process that, that we've utilized, panel as well as smaller cabinet level.
This will be a position that requires both the technical degrees or whatever and certification, right?
Yeah.
Right, we're asking for teaching credential and administrative credential, background in networking and server management, so yes, we're asking for a lot. We need someone to do a lot.
Asking for the moon.
Might have to be.
Has a lot of this.
So if, if we don't get someone, you know, after a certain amount of time, you might have to think about breaking it up into.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to rethink how to do this, but we really do need a bridge between the two, the two worlds.
Yeah.
Because we, we have functional technology, and we want to have more instructional technology, and we want to be able to lead in both, both places. So we'll see, you know, we'll put this out there, this, we followed closely what other districts have done, and they found somebody, so we think we might be able to find someone.
With all those qualifications?
Yep.
All right, that's.
Yeah, so those people exist. There might only be three, and they're already hired. We're hoping that there might be a fourth one out there.
Hopefully they're watching right now.
That's right. Okay, so, any further questions?
No, I'm just excited and happy that we're moving forward with this.
So I will make a motion to approve the job description for Director of Technology and Curriculum Integration.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That sounded unanimous to me. Okay, hey, we're making progress here. Section six, board policies, and we do have a first reading on our policy revisions for contracts.
Yeah, and a couple others as well. So this is the regular policy that we update almost every six months, the non-discrimination harassment policy. Every time legislature passes a new protection for a new, a new class, they, we need to revise our policies to include that class. I think in this particular policy, it's individuals who identify as transgender, so there's a whole new set of laws pertaining to that, and we need to include that. I'm hoping at some point they just say, no discrimination or harassment for anybody, regardless, you know, of.
It does seem like it would make sense, doesn't it?
But anyway, this is, this at least reminds us that we need to look back at our policies and, and update them. And there's also some concussion policies in there with a lot of the laws that came out of events from last year, so needing to include some concussion awareness and education for our students who do participate in any kind of sports or athletic activity while at school, and for parents to know.
Which of course all of them do, because they all have PE.
Yeah, so, and then lastly, there is a contracts one, and that just modifies the policy to meet the, the state limits for public contracts. If you have any questions, I can look at the policy and answer them, or we can accept for a second reading.
Do we send, or are we about to start sending that concussion information then home to all parents, given that all of, I mean, we don't have the organized sports, but we have every child in PE?
So the policy, the way that it's written right now, is that this concussion information will need to be sent home to students prior to them going into a sport activity, but this will be, because of student and the parent need to understand that. I'm not sure that we would send it out with that same requirement that they sign in return.
Right.
But I think we'll just, this will be a piece of information that will be available when there is a situation where a student has had a concussive incident, that the nurse and the, the school staff will send home with that student when they get picked up.
Because it's, it's definitely worth any parent or anybody taking a look at to, to see, because there were some things on that that, you know, I wouldn't necessarily have picked up on some of those things as signs that somebody had had a concussion, and the fact that they point out that you don't have to have been unconscious to have had a concussion was like, no, what? You know? So, you know, worth, I mean, that, that has, that's neither here for their, for whether we approve it, but it's like, it's worth going home and reading that.
And I, I believe our school nurses do send home another, a, their own information sheet when they, when they determine that a student has had some kind of an injury that parents need to follow up, they have their own information sheet, so. But this is in particular, just sort of as a prior to participating in an athletic event, sporting team.
Right.
That parents sign off that they've read this and they understand it, and they return it to the school.
Are there any, any other questions or discussions on any of the changes in the policies?
No.
I was satisfied with them, so can we have a motion to accept the first reading?
Motion to accept the first reading? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have accepted the first reading, and that brings us to any reports, committee reports, we haven't had any committee meetings.
I can report, I'm, I'm going to be sending out some possible dates to those of you on the high school committee, as well as the city committee. There's some topics that we need to start addressing, so I'll get back to you as soon as I have some possible choices.
Right, okay. And any public comment cards? Okay. Then we will, at eight thirty, we will take a brief recess, and we will be reconvening in closed session in about five minutes.